I can't see a thing. Okay, go. They're calling the City of Ione General Law, dedicated to providing -- oh, forget it. Calling the meeting into order. You want to call it the roll?
Oh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Yep.
(inaudible)
Now, let's just hold it. I'll draw.
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Epperson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhodes.
Here.
And Mayor Rowley.
Here. Can't call for approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda. A second.
It's first and second.
On favor?
Yeah, I'm totally blowing this.
I know.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Nope.
Nothing anybody wants to pull? Okay, when called for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No negative, no, no, so it's approved. No presentation or announcements? Call for public comment? This time you may come and speak. Four-minute minimum, please. Anybody have a public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public.
Oh.
Payment matters enough.
We didn't talk fast enough.
No, I like, I like this place.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought the meetings were at six.
You did.
You did.
Six oh four.
Wow. My name is Dan Sinclair. And I'm here tonight to talk about building some batting cages out of Howard Park. And I would use this packet that I think I showed you once before about the, how we got the skate park done. That would be a model that, that I would suggest we, we look toward. And, and actually, well, I don't think it would be that complicated to build the skate park, I mean, to build the batting cages as it would be, as it was to, to build the skate park. Because the batting cages could actually be very good moneymakers. They would not only attract people to come to Ione, but they would actually have them pay for the, for the, for the cages themselves. So, one of the, one of the things that came up when we were talking about the skate park is that somebody, I can't remember, asked if there was any money that was, that was going to come our way because of the skate park. And, and the answer was, not really. But this could, the batting cage could definitely work in that, in that direction. I'd be happy to, to do all the work that would be necessary to, to put the package together. What I need from you here is, I need a resolution to say that you're going to dedicate the, the space that would be required. And my suggestion would, would be to put it on the eastern end of the, of the park, sort of right in here. These, these don't, haven't really been built out to the, to the racetrack. There's quite a bit of space there, here, that I think would work quite, quite nicely for, for the, for the batting cages. And then they could accommodate parking. There would be electricity there, and, and it would, it would work for everybody concerned. I have not visited very, very many batting cages, but I went online today, and there's, there's probably 11 of them within an hour's drive from here. But none in Amador County whatsoever. So, I think we would have something really to be proud of out there if we could, if we could get this thing done. Any questions at all?
Have you been to the planning, or to the Parks and Recreation Committee?
No.
With this idea?
No. I, I wanted, I wanted to pitch it to you people so, so that you would get on board, and then, and then give me the, give me the, the go-ahead to, to, let's get this thing on, on the roll.
I would recommend that you make your pitch to Parks and Rec, because that's where it would need to start. And then they will make a recommendation up to council, and then we would go from there. So, you're going top-down instead of bottom-up.
They'll do all the research, how much would cost, and all.
No, no, I, I don't want to. They're not going to do the research, and everything, they're not going to do that.
Well, then they would have to approve all their research before they make recommendations to us.
So, I, I, well, we would, thank you for your suggestion. It's a very good suggestion. I would have liked to have had batting cages when my daughters played softball.
Yes, really.
I agree. What I would like for you to do at this point is to go ahead and make your pitch to Parks and Recs.
Can I, can I ask you, please?
You have, like, 30 seconds. Your, your four minutes is running.
I'm talking about a pretty important item here.
I understand that.
I'm talking about a pretty important item here, and it doesn't take me, it doesn't seem to me that you're taking me very seriously.
I'm taking you very seriously, and I would, again, I would encourage you strongly to take your suggestion to Parks and Recs, because that would be where it has to start. I very much appreciate your time.
I disagree with that, by the way.
Okay.
I think, I think you should, you should take a leadership position and say, this is a great idea, let's get on board with this thing, and let's make this thing happen. You tell the Park and Rec people what to do, not the other way around.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I still want to comment on that. I think it's a good idea, Parks and Rec looked at batting cages, but Mr. Sinclair, you're a councilperson. You know that we can't take any action on something that's not on an agenda. So, please take it to Parks and Rec. Like, I think you'll find that we support your idea, but there's a way that we have to do things. So, I encourage you to follow the mayor's advice, and you likely will get a lot of support, because I believe they already looked at batting cages and already priced it out. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nope, I'm going to close the public comment. Moving on. Consent calendar? Do I have a discussion on the consent calendar?
I'll move. We accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Public comment? Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar? No public comment, closing that. I would entertain a motion?
We have one.
We have one.
I already have one?
Seconded.
Oh, second? Okay, well, it's a first and second. Can I get a vote of yes? All in favor?
Yes.
Agreed.
No no's? It's, so it's done. Moving on to H, public hearing. We have none. Onto the regular agenda. First item is surplus property and appraisals that we received.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. As you will recall, council gave authorization for staff to move forward to get appraisals for three properties that the city owned that the council is interested in the possibility of surplusing. The city hired Jack Ashworth. Can you hand me back there?
Oh, yeah. I don't want to tell you what it sounded like you said.
Yeah. I second it.
Me too.
Okay, I'll, sorry.
Pronounce it.
Start with the last name again.
Pause between the first and the last name.
Mr. Ashworth, who was a certified appraiser in Southern Creek, he looked at the properties, and he conducted an appraisal using the standard appraisal methods. The evaluations came back on the property on Southern Lane is estimated value is $35,000. The value of the property on Fairway Drive is also estimated at $35,000. And the value of the property on Shakely Lane is estimated at $45,000. Total estimated value of all three properties is, pardon me, $115,000. As council moves forward with the process, staff is recommending that council attach the following conditions to be placed on the properties. Properties to be used for residential development, all three of them are zoned for residential properties. The properties and the future owners would be subject to any subdivision, CCNRs, that are in existence within the subdivision. Houses should be constructed on each site, and, and similar, should, are, should be constructed on each site with a, a similar style, color scheme, size, and value as the other homes within the subdivisions. Purchasers must begin the permit process to construct a new home within a year purchased from the, the city. And the property on Shakely will need a few other conditions. One is that it needs to be incorporated into the Amador Water Agency's Community Facilities District, which is a special tax A, and, under the metal roof bonds. And the City of Ione's Community Facility District number 205-2, improvement area number three. Now, again, the, the City of Ione owns the property of Shakely, but because it's public property, it has not assessed the, the special tax B. And special tax B is for the police, fire, and the, the landscape. And if I remember correctly, I think the, the yearly costs for the assessment on improvement area three is like $810, I'm going to say around $870. I could be off a little bit there, but I'm pretty sure it's in the $870, some dollars. In order to get that property into the CFD, the city and, and the water district would need to go through basically an annexation process. That would be where the, the property owner, i.e. the city, would consent to being, the property being assessed or included into the, the community facilities districts. The council would then pass a resolution stating that, you know, the consent to the, 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 what would be a vote of the, the property owner, which would be council. So, again, we're looking at one property, the vote, I would assume would, would be yes. Then it gets recorded on that tax lot, and when the property is developed and a certificate of occupancy is, is issued for that, that property, that, that's assessed like all the other properties within the community facilities district. I, I know that this process can be done. As I was researching this, I found other communities that were annexing properties into already existing community facilities districts, even if they weren't contiguous to the, the original community facilities district. There is an annexation process for, for that process. Right now, the staff is just looking, and this is kind of an updated report as to where we are. And the staff is looking for direction as to how we want to move forward. If we want to continue to move forward with surplusing the property, especially with the Shakely property, I'll need to begin that process, because that is somewhat of a time-consuming, consuming process to get that done. I'll need to be talking to the, the Amador Water Agency relating to their process for annexation. But, like I said, this is what the assessments, excuse me, what the estimate of value appraisals are, are looking like. So, this is just kind of a, a report. It has all the backup information associated with, with the, the information. I guess, are there any questions related to the, the appraisals or the properties that we're, we're still discussing about surplusing?
I've got two things. First of all, what I would like to see is, like, the starting bid starts at the appraisal. So, we put it out to bid for whatever, 60 days, 30 days, whatever the city desires. But, so, if it's appraised at $35,000, then what, I'd take sealed bids for 30 days or whatever, starting at $35,000. For all three properties, that way we'll get the most bang for our buck. And if nobody wants it but one person, then he gets a good deal. Second thing is, is one year to start building a little short with, with all the regulations and everything else. I mean, I would be okay if it was, you know, 18 months or something like that. I'm just a little concerned the one year. I mean, you, it goes fast. And then we're going to be in a situation whereby we're going to then have to take action on, what's the action when it doesn't happen? So, that's not in there. So, what is the recourse? The person forfeits a property, or, you know, what happens there?
I, I talked to some of the neighbors on at least one of the properties, for sure, and I've talked to some other ones, other ones we're looking at. And the one person, he expressed interest in just annexing, annexing the lot to his yard, just expand his yard space. You know, I think the one I referred to was on Southern Lane. I think it's, that area's not really, there's not a real, I mean, there's a bunch of different property kind of mixed in there, especially when you had the south there, but there's a bunch of different empty lots and things that are in that neighborhood. So, it wouldn't, the only thing, I think the condition there would be they, they're going to, I mean, I don't know how the city's going to be supposed to do this, or they are, but like, there's an apron that runs in there that needs to be cleaned up, whoever owns it, probably. That's the, that sidewalks, and that, I'm not sure if that's something that we need to do, or the buyer would do that, or what. But, like, right now, basically, this looks like a dead-end street. It's got a bunch of, like, wood, and then some posts, and then, and that's kind of the problem there, where the one neighborhood uses it, just like a landfill kind of thing, there's a bunch of stuff in there. But it's, it's clearly not a road, but it, it just would be nice to have that cleaned up, or the point of getting rid of it.
Are you referring to one of the three properties?
Uh, Southern.
Yeah, the one on Southern.
Yeah, the other ones, I mean, other ones, they, and they're, they're already in neighborhoods that are very, you know, monolithic. You can tell that what's supposed to be there would blend right in. This one here, if it turned into somebody's yard, I wouldn't break my heart, just as long as it's cleaned up and, uh, it looks like a neighborhood instead of a side street.
I would, I assume that it's possible, and I would think it'd be wise to make sure that whatever conditions, and I like these conditions, and I don't see any problem with them, but that they go with the property, so that if somebody buys it and then sells it to somebody else, we still have the same conditions.
If it's, if it's contiguous, that's my one point there. If it's, the person that buys is contiguous and doesn't stay in the lot, that's part of their lot. But if it's, somebody buys it that's not on either side of the property, then it becomes a lot for developing. That'd be my last one, my point.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
So, you, so you wouldn't want, obviously, hold them to constructing another building on there if they just annexed?
Just these parts of their property, yeah. I don't think we should dictate to the.
Okay, got you.
The only thing I had, I noticed was, and I don't think it really matters, is this appraiser's license expired, like, four months ago. I don't know if it's a typo, or, I don't think it matters, but.
I didn't catch that. I talked to the realtors in the community, who said, who do you use? That's who they referred me to.
Um, there's, there's three pages where it says expiration date of his license was 10/28/2019.
That maybe feels like the process.
It's a typo, or.
Maybe it's not updated.
I don't think it even matters, or a regular appraisal.
Well, if we're going to stand on it, I'd be pretty sure better have a licensed appraiser giving us information.
Let me contact him and see if there was an error there, or, make sure it has a current license.
Yeah. At least through the date of these appraisals.
Any other council questions?
I have a couple. The assessment cost and the process to get these properties annexed into the CFDs, is there going to be cost involved with that to the city?
There will be some. There will be some staff time, there'll be some recording of documents, so, yes, there will be some. I can't tell you what that is at this particular juncture.
Okay, I, I think we should add that into the additional cost of the property for the auctioning. I agree that the stipulation that there be a house constructed, I think if they're going to, and it should be an either-or, if they're going to become part of their property, that has to be done in, in a period of time. And I think a year is probably a little too short. I would say two, two years, if they're going to, you know, get a contractor to build the house, it may take some time to get some plans and things like that. If, if we don't do it, if they do not meet the requirement, are we going to have stipulations as to what that means, as far as penalties and things like that?
I got one more thing, if you, so, what happens if someone buys it and says, I'm going to have my yard, and then decides he wants to put an ADU on it in a year or two's time? So, that would circumvent all the fees and everything. So, I, now, thinking about that, I think that needs to be in there as well. I don't even know if you could tell someone that you can't build an ADU on it.
You can't tell them what to do with it once they own it.
So, I mean, you got to think right now that, you got to build a house on it, or, or perhaps they'll get around it, the fees. So, it's like, so as far as I can turn, because of all this issues with ADUs and stuff, it's like, nah, you got to build a house on it. I mean, he can.
If, if somebody, let's say, bought the lot next to them and then wanted to put an ADU on, I mean, they're still building for residential development, they just have a bigger lot size. But, I mean, yeah, what the rules relate to ADUs are, the rules that relate to ADUs, that's.
But it's a discount on all the fees, aren't we?
Understand, but that's the rules to.
I understand. You could put a house, I mean, you could put just a house on it, call it an ADU, and not have to do a lot of, of the thing. And, and like, that's, I mean, that could be fine.
I, I understand what you're saying, but again, the laws in terms of California's related to the ADUs are, those are the laws that would change, yeah.
Maybe you should consult with them, Dom, he makes money.
Well, is our goal to have a single-family home on the property, or is our goal to get the property sold and maintained? So, I think that's what we have to decide.
Sure.
If they want to annex it to their property and put an ADU on it, they're still improving the property, they're still, you know, bringing in housing. So, if they want to do that, that's, to me, that would be fine, but.
That's what I thought of, the whole idea of this was to sell it.
Well, again, that's the, what, what is our goal?
Well, I think one of, one of the goals in my mind is, is to increase the number of living units available to people in the, in the city. That's why I would like to somehow keep speculators from, you know, picking it up and just holding on to it and then selling it five years later, you know? So, you, you have, you demand that they build something on it, and that kind of takes care of that, so.
The other thing is, you know, like, currently, we have, we're trying to keep the neighborhoods looking like the neighborhood, so you don't put a, you know, a metal roof house next to wherever everybody's got tile. But if you were to allow it to become an ADU, they can do whatever they want. So, the city will lose the control of the architectural style, which is, I don't care if they go to an ADU, as long as they build it in the same style as, as what's on the street, basically, so.
Do we want to come to some consensus as to what the goal is for that, or do we just want?
I'd say just keep it, it's getting too complicated.
Single families, keep it as is in here. Single-family home, must be built in a year or two years?
Don't sell it. Just don't sell it.
Don't sell the property?
No.
Oh.
And council doesn't have to take any bid. I mean, council always has the right to refuse if you, if you don't want to sell it.
I don't want to sell. I think we, we could use the money, and like I say, I'd like to see more living units. And I think there's plenty of developers nosing around now, wanting to, yeah.
I would agree with you.
Well, I think too, like, I think the one piece, the piece over next to the park, probably, that money, that's generated from the sale should go back in the parks. The rest of it, I don't know. But I know that money was dedicated for parks, I believe that property was, anyway. The other two, there's empty lots that we ended up with, the, the tag lot there on Southern, that was going to be a road that was going to go through. It just, plans changed, and that got nicked, so I think that can be whatever. I think that can be sold however you want, just sell it to somebody. They can put a house on it, or the guy next door, one of them can buy it and make a yard out of it. The one over on Shakely, that one is just an empty, that's a piece of land that was left over. And that one, I really don't care about either, as long as it conforms to the neighborhood, it's maintained, that's all in there. But like the park lot, that should be a house, probably, just because that's what would fit in the neighborhood. Otherwise, it'll just look like it does now, which is the whole point of, not just to make a few bucks, but it'd be nice to have it in the park fund, to put, build batting cages or something like that.
I thought all of the money was going to go, like, to parks.
Yeah, according to this, all the, all the money is going to the parks.
That, that was the recommendation from council.
Yeah, that's fine. And I, I like that.
I just want to make sure at least the one that was dedicated is park money goes into. The other ones, they're not really park money, but they can be, shouldn't, certainly the destination should be decided before we sell them. The parks is the way it looks like, so that's fine.
So, at this point, John, do you have enough to go forward, or do we have to give you any further directions?
No. One of the things that I'm, was most concerned, or really looking for direction for, was, again, the Shakely property, because, and as we move forward on that, like I said, there is that annexation process. Wanted to make sure that council is aware that there's some additional steps for this one. Now, now, again, council could decide that, no, we're, we don't want it incorporated into the, the, the CFDs, and that, you know, that is something that you, you could decide. But, and again, you have a house that's not contributing its fair share with, with the other neighbors.
Yeah, I think that's important for me, that it's in the CFDs. It's in the CFD district, so it's benefiting from all the improvements, and it needs to pay.
I agree. Any further discussion? Public comment?
I'd just like to say what Dom had talked about. If you read SP 65, and SP 13, and SP 333, it kind of covers it all. And they can build up to 1,200 square foot place. And it don't have to be, it could be a modular. You could read that, and it says it can be a modular, it can be anything, it don't have to be any design. And he's absolutely correct. And you can build two of them on them, as long as they're four foot from the side, and four foot and three foot from your house. You can build two of them on your lot, anywhere. That's the law now.
No, that's a little four now.
Yeah, today.
Not today, yeah.
Tomorrow might be different.
It will be different.
Hi, good evening. I just would like to learn a little bit about this stuff, while it's in front of us. I printed out the land appraisal report for one of the parcels, the one that's on Southern Lane, and I just have a couple of questions, just to begin, just so I can learn. On the page, I think it's two of 14, because I was looking to see, are they already ready to, are they buildable? Are they buildable lots? And my question is actually about, probably that Shakely property. But on here, if you could just clarify for me, is it ready to go? The middle section there, it says it's got electric, gas, water, and there's X's there. Does that mean they, it's already, you know, stubbed out these things? I mean, is that a buildable, is that what that means?
It means it's nearby, because this really wasn't a, a planned residential lot.
Okay. It says that street. I just wanted to confirm what I'm guessing is, is the case. Okay, and then the next section there, it says off-site improvements, so it's already got its sewer hookup, would be right there at the street to hook up to, blah, blah, blah.
Again, remember that Southern was a street, so they'd have to stub to the main line, because there isn't a stub out, there was never planned to stub out for that, that parcel.
Okay, so they're starting from scratch on that one?
Not necessarily starting from scratch, but again.
From the street end to.
Yeah. They have, they have to go all the way. There's been no stub out for that line, because like I said, there was never anticipated to be a lot there, it was anticipated to be a road.
Okay. Okay, may I ask, are the other two ready to go? I didn't, I didn't put the pages.
It'd be the same, it'd be the same.
Okay.
The services are in the street. The contractor, developer, whoever, would have to take the services.
Right, okay.
They have to go to the main, because they're having to do any stubs off the main.
Yeah, okay. And then there's this one other box that says present improvements, the X is in, do not conform to zoning regulations. I'm sorry, John, can you tell me what that means? Just right there next, just to the right of the stuff we were just looking at. On the Shakely one, is, I'm looking at, just, that's the ones I printed.
On the Shakely one?
Yeah, it says, do not conform to zoning regulations. So, I, I didn't know how that, in my mind, that conflicts with these other things that say it's all there, you just have to bring it to your house. I didn't know what that meant, so.
I'm sorry, I've not seen what you're seeing.
There's the little section right here.
On the top, I was doing here.
Yeah. Does not conform to public, present improvements do not conform to zoning regulations. I just wondered what that meant. I don't.
Present, okay.
Right. And they don't, talking to the attorney, they don't conform because they're not in.
Does it mean that the, the, the lot is not properly zoned for something?
It says, it says, present improvements.
It says, it says present improvements do not conform to zoning regulations. What we've, what we've said is they are nearby, electric, gas, water, so it's nearby.
Okay, so it goes along.
You had to read before.
I got you.
So again, we're talking the improvements that are present.
Right, right.
Right, it's confusing because it's right next to where it says zoning classifications.
Right, right. So my only other question is why would we not treat this, I was surprised when Dominic said that I didn't read the whole packet, that it was a closed bid thing. Why wouldn't we not sell it like any other real estate agent? My example is this, there's houses that sit up in Castle Oaks, I watch real estate quite a bit, but Lori Bullock got hers sold in a week because she dropped the price by 20% of what's kind of the current market value. So are we set on the, these amounts? I was surprised by the sealed bid. Why wouldn't you just say we're asking 35 and if somebody bids 32.5, you go bingo, it's yours.
The reason that I asked that is because not too many years ago, the city of Ione sold six acres across from the golf course for $700,000 and she flipped it in a year for 1.5 million. So at the time, the county appraiser, county Joe Lo, the tax collector, so, and, you know, I was saying that was crazy. I mean, you know, we just lost, you know, $700,000 there and he said, well, you know, what they do at the county when they surplus property is they, is they do the big thing because it's kind of like, hey, if someone walks in and says, hey, I'll give you 20,000 and you take it and then it's worth more, so it's basically, it's got a praise for that. It was just like how they sold the state property on Sutter Lane, you know, the old Preston House, they did the same thing. They had, you know, sealed bids starting at whatever and, and that's how they sold it.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further public comment? Okay, closed public comment. So, John, you're good? We don't need to give you any further direction?
I'm good.
Okay. Item number four, committee assignments. I have the list of the committees at this point. I have not made any decisions as to where anybody's going to go at this point or what I'm going to do with that. I would like to table that until at the, at the very least, the next council meeting. Top of a comment on that?
I'll second the motion to table that.
It's not a motion.
It's not a motion?
She can't make the motion. She can't make those motions.
So I don't have to do anything with that? That's it?
I mean, it would be nice if somebody else would make the motion for you.
I will make the motion to table the committee assignments till the next meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. Moving on, city managers' reports.
Okay, we have the update from, I shouldn't say update, the annual report from ATCT related to regional impact fees. That will be coming on the agenda at the next council meeting. Council needs to adopt a, a resolution accepting the report. Also, work continues with the self-help committee, the meeting again on the, on Thursday at 2:00. Counselor Reed, do you, are you getting?
I've been following the emails. They're at times like.
Okay, so I'll continue to go to that. I know they're working on a white paper to talk about the, the need for the, the half a, half a cent sales tax and I would anticipate the white paper and some sort of a resolution to support the concept either probably in late January, early February. Also, did the risk management review with our, our insurance company and getting the results back here shortly in terms of where we're situated with the risk management policies and procedures with our, our insurance carrier. It was how, Christmas and New Year, so it was kind of a broken couple of weeks. I hope everybody had a good holiday.
Public comment on the manager's reports? You don't have? Nope, okay. City council committee reports, any?
I don't have none.
I don't have none. I had nothing.
Okay, nothing there. Moving on to future agenda items.
I have the ATCT one that I talked about and the self-help. Dennis, did we have something? I seem to remember asking if we have something for the, the second meeting in Jan, January and I can't remember what it was now.
All I have is the ACTC.
Okay, maybe that's the one then.
Are we still working on a report from Mill Creek State Prison? We talked about this a while back. I'm not sure if the report's out or there's some regional stuff going on that, I don't know if it's, it's far enough along for.
I have made contact with the Mill Creek State Prison and regional water quality related to presentations to city council. I still haven't got a confirmed date back. I will contact them again.
All right, I'll probably be at the meeting somewhere between here and there. I think it's coming up pretty quick.
Any other future agenda items from anybody?
I have a comment. Oh, look at me Sophie, I can't, tell me to shut up if I go too far, but currently they're doing the sewer line on North Royal Seaco Street and the contractor's doing an excellent job. Originally, when we all talked about this, the idea was to change all the main line on North Royal Seaco. And there was at one point, there was a map where it showed it was 447 feet or whatever and I kept saying the line goes another 100 feet and we kind of got in an argument and well, someone said the pipe is fine, it's good. Well, today they actually exposed it and I got pictures of it and I talked to the contractor about it and I said, well, being you're here, what would it cost to actually replace the whole sewer line on North Royal Seaco? And it's another 100 feet. He gave me his bid sheet, so I got all his prices and to finish it all, and I believe we should do it because one of the problems was we were told it's clay pipe, well, most of that street is not clay pipe, it's transite pipe. And you should look up what transite pipe is and if you can get it out and you want it out because it's gonna be very expensive to get rid of someday. So anyhow, I, I did a cost estimate myself with the contractor and it's about $27,000 to do, to, to finish the whole street and it would be done in brand new pipe. So it basically take a change order from the city, John can tell where we need to, request a change order and then get an actual real quote, but I strongly suggest that we do it because that's a transite pipe, it will fail and the contractor's already there. Just so you know, the mob in and mope out is like 10 grand, so you're already saving $10,000 just off that because he's there. He already has a little pipe to do it because originally when he looked at the job, he thought he was doing the whole street and then it came back just manhole to manhole. So if we have the $27,000, I think it'd be great to do it because you're, you're taking three houses, they're still gonna be hooked up to an old sewer line and we have the opportunity to do this fairly cheap at this moment. I don't know how we bring this in a, up or how I do this, but.
You just did.
There's some other things, but I gotta talk to this Sophie tomorrow about that, but.
So then Johnny thoughts there though? I mean, we're, it's, I know we're, it's, they're, the hole's open right now.
They're gonna be there for another couple of weeks, so.
If I get more information, I can get ahold of Wanger and again, looking at if that's what, if that's what council wants to do, I can prepare him for the change order.
I think we have in the budget for a call, I think we do, but it's also a matter of what, I should talk to engineer to make sure we get a consensus there.
And then we'll have to bring that back here for the next council meeting.
Would it be helpful to have an additional council meeting next week for that one?
You gotta remember, you're gonna be here that long and if he bails.
Right.
You just lost 10 grand.
Right, that's the problem. Well, the problem is we're getting some approval and then the change order, does it have to go through us?
Yes, that, 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 that value it does.
It does and that's, I think Tom's suggestion, if you have a chance to talk to the contractor, if it's something you're interested in, you want to give direction to staff to pursue it, the direction should also include having a potential special meeting next week to discuss that specific issue because of the timeliness.
There's a question, when I was working on the sewer plan, I did change orders all the time for the company and we basically got with engineer and said, this, we need to do this and it was, some of them were $50,000 decisions.
It's gonna exceed the minimum or the maximum, I guess, is what I think.
Exactly. Private's different than public and we have specific limits of authority, which can we just change those, but that is going to affect in the eyes.
The only way out is if there's emergency, which that wouldn't be emergency, there's the pipe, there's something we don't like.
I think it's a good idea that, you know, we've discovered something during an excavation and it's been brought to our attention and I think it's a, it's a good idea, but then if we have the money and the budget to do it, then I'm, I'm for it, so.
I think we can, we can actually call for emergency meeting short notice as well. That'd be good, that'd be the thing we could do too, so that we could at least, the time limit.
You can gendize this and have it by next session.
Special meeting's 24 hours anyway.
That's exactly right.
An emergency meeting.
Janice, is there a planning commission meeting?
We talked about one today.
Okay.
So there will be.
There will be one, okay. If they could push it back 30 minutes, I mean.
What time is, their meeting is at 6?
Correct.
They could push it, they could push it back for, I mean, I can imagine it's gonna take more than about a half an hour.
Yeah, what we gotta do is.
Or 2:00. You can't make.
For us, I could make, I could make, well, two minutes to spare, I could make 6.
5:30. That's gonna be an issue.
5:30 would be a little tough for me, but we could do 7.
Be a short meeting.
If they could push theirs back to 6:30, I don't know, what's their agenda, do we know what their agenda looks like?
I haven't seen that yet.
We have one item on vacation.
Just one?
And it's a discussion at this point.
Okay, so can we ask them to push that back to 6:30 and we'll take, go from 6:00 to 6:30? Next to you, Dan.
We can.
Okay, then let's do that. And then we will, you will have all of the information there for us by then.
Right, I'll certainly try to get, get all that stuff and out to you so that we, we meet all the timeframes.
Perfect, all right. Any other future agenda items or comments, suggestions?
Should I bring up this basketball hoop thing? Has anyone heard about?
Gendize it.
Yeah, you can't really discuss.
Bring it up on the next meeting about the basketball hoop thing that everyone's having.
Well, the basketball hoop ordinance.
Yeah.
On the streets. So we're gonna have to put basketball hoops on there.
That's it.
Okay, all right. And I don't have to do public comment on this? All right, so then we will be going into closed session. We are going to look at three, three items pursuant to California Government Code 54957, performance evaluation title, coastline engineering, de novo planning, preface long PC, perk water, eco-urban, Simons landscaping. The second one is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, government code section 54956.92D, one case. And then the third is pursuant to California Government Code 54957, performance evaluation title city manager. I will take any public comment on the closed session.
Maybe somebody at the council could ask me, I'd like to know how come coastline now that, that is not personnel, that's, that's a contract, how come that ain't open to the public? Have an answer.
I'm gonna take this down, but Sophie, I mean, this is, this is an evaluation of the contract award.
Yeah, but it's an evaluation. The thing is, is if a person had a problem, you don't take any written correspondence. They got a problem with one of these, you will never know about it. You don't accept written correspondence.
We don't accept written correspondence from the public.
That's right, you don't bring it up in public.
We receive.
And you should be. You don't not bring it up in public. They did that a long time ago.
This is the opportunity for anybody to weigh in with regards to this performance evaluations and give information to the council is a public comment about your opinions about, about these folks.
Oh, okay.
So this is your opportunity to do that right now. That's why we take public comment before we do a closed session.
Okay, I just wanted to know how to go about it.
Yeah.
Cause I never seen this done before, thank you.
Well, and it's something new that we're doing.
Any further public comment? Go ahead, closed public comment. We will proceed to closed session.
You want me to go first?
Okay.
You know you want to shake.